And call this meeting to order.
Brooks.
Here.
Jacobs. Holmberg.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Lund.
Here. Uh, approval of city council minutes.
Move to your booth. Brooks.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. Adoption of agenda.
Move it out.
Brooks.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes. All right, next we have a presentation of the city of Warrensburg budget cover photo contest winners presented by Matthew.
This year we had, we had twenty-six photos, most photos in there, uh, since we started doing this. It was a great turnout, but I appreciate everyone for submitting their photos. Our first place winner was Cheryl Middleton, I don't see her in the office, I mean, that's what, uh, yeah, I should've.
I don't know if anyone else could see him.
Yeah, I should've had Gary Cooper up there, but, yeah, it wasn't just a nice picture. And then, uh, second place was, uh, Michael Tolles. Tolles, let me check.
Is that the one with the train tracks?
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that was my favorite.
Yeah.
I'm glad for that one.
Really pretty.
It wasn't for you, Brian.
Look, looking at the clock like it's wrong. I knew I was close.
I just wanna thank everybody, thank you guys for participating.
Hey, late once in six years, so I'm doing good, guys.
All right, next on the docket, we have a public hearing, a public hearing to consider sewer rate volume change charges for the upcoming fiscal year two thousand twenty budget year by the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Talk about this at all?
Um, no, not, not for, we will bring the, um, uh, the ordinance to council at the next council meeting.
Okay. All right.
We'll do a first reading, uh, next council meeting, and then the second, we'll do it on the, what is that?
Second one in August?
The second one.
Okay, sounds good, moving on to first reading ordinances, an ordinance to enable the city of Warrensburg, Missouri to join Show Me Pace pursuant to sections sixty-seven dot twenty-eight hundred to sixty-seven dot twenty-eight thirty-five, RSMO, the Property Assessment Clean Energy Act, and stating the terms under which the city will conduct activities as a member of such district.
Okay, um, first off, I'd like to thank Phil Miller, he's, um, really, I would consider the visionary of what we call the Energy and Sustainability Task Force, and, um, I've been privileged to, to be working with that group. And one of the things that I've learned, um, went back to ordinance, um, in two thousand eighteen, and said that, that was established the task force to the city council in Warrensburg Community Ideas and Methods for Energy Efficiency, Resource, um, Conservation, Renewable Energy Solutions, and to encourage adoption of measures to achieve these goals. And so with that in mind, um, Phil had invited someone in from, um, what's called Show Me Pace, and it's a, um, energy district. And one of the reasons why we need to do an ordinance is by Missouri statute to allow them to, um, fund, uh, do private funding in the city, we have to officially pass an ordinance. And so I told Phil I would definitely support that, and I think we should, um, you know, as council members, um, support it. What, um, it does is allows for this organization to privately fund businesses and, um, charitable not-for-profit groups and, uh, city with, um, private funding for it. Um, there's an aspect for residential, that requires a little bit more work, where we have to work with the, um, the county and, and get an assessment process going. But, um, allowing this, um, ordinance to go through will allow businesses and, and churches and other groups to receive, um, funding, like I said. And then the, um, other thing, though, as we talked, is I did some research, well, when I say I did, city staff has done everything, so I appreciate that. But, um, some research, because we have an ordinance on the books for another energy group, and, um, part of the, um, discussion I had with Phil was, we don't just wanna pass an ordinance and then nobody know about it. And so, uh, we, we talked extensively Friday, came up with a plan to reach out to different groups like the Chamber, Warrensburg Main Street, um, Economic Development, to, um, actually make sure that our businesses and other folks are educated that this is available. And so he agreed to that, and I know he's, um, started reaching out to folks. So, uh, with that said, I've tried to be, um, kinda articulate and, um, cover the reason why I want to have this first reading, and I would take questions at this point.
Did I say on here, Scott, that you're meeting once a year, or did I miss something there? Is there like a meeting that you guys have?
Well, we meet each month.
Okay.
There's an annual report that the energy group does, um, is required to give to the city.
Was I understanding this correctly, it, the funds don't come from the city, th- this is just a formality, so that the orga- the, the, the macro organization can put funds into projects inside the city limits, does that sound right?
It is correct, this is not, um, city funded, the only cost to the city are things such as this, where we have, um, discussion about it or review, it's all private funded.
Okay, so there's no cost to be a member of the organization?
There's no cost, uh, and the assessment's done within Pace, the Show Me Pace group itself, so, um, this allows them to do.
So I didn't read everything, word, and I apologize, I tried to, was there so many members on it that are supposed to be on it, or?
Not for Pace, this is just us as a city, allowing them to, um, do business here for, the task force, there were members.
No, I, when I was reading through it, I, I, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly what it was, uh, it spoke briefly about liens, being put on property. Is that like if someone receives money, uh, there's a lien put on the property until such time as they?
There's an assessment, uh, posed against it, so if a business were to agree to this, um, funding, it can be up to twenty years, and so there would be the normal process, just similar as a bank, that's just a different funding source.
Okay.
Phil, I did give you, um, a shout-out earlier for.
Sorry, I'm late.
You're fine, I just wanted to make sure you knew that, um, I did thank you, and I, uh, told the folks that I, that you're the visionary of the task force, and I appreciated getting to know you and work on this with you, so, thank you.
Any other questions on this?
I think I can answer.
Phil, you have any comment, or?
Well, I'm kind of in the middle of listening, so I, I, I know that the city has already passed, uh, an ordinance allowing another Pace district to, to work here and, and, uh, work the Pace program, so it's basically allowing another similar entity to do the same thing, and this entity is going to concentrate more on commercial business, uh, rather than residential, although that's a possibility.
Anybody else have any comment?
So.
Okay.
So would this be a, essentially are they coming in and lending money for, at preferred rates, to do improvements? And then they pay the, the pri- price back, or whatever the period term is, is that what I, how I understood it?
Yeah, this is a, um, a funding source, what exactly that, it would be.
So it's not like a grant that's coming?
It is not a grant, it would be similar to a bank or other, it's just focused on clean energy and, um, they also have to, the project has to show a return on investment, et cetera, so.
Gotcha.
It would be typical funding, just through a, a special group.
And the low-hanging fruit here is the commercial side of this, the residential side gets a little bit more complicated and would be contingent upon a, uh, a collection agreement with the, uh, county collector and Show Me Pace, and so it'll be, get a little bit gray, uh, if we go down the residential road, but, uh, the commercial side is much, uh, simpler, is my understanding.
I actually met this organization at one of the Missouri real estate conferences, and they, they do, um, they have a residential site too, but, yeah, you gotta get a lot more people on board to do that piece.
Any other questions?
Yep.
Comments from anybody?
Everybody good?
All right. Moving on to first reading of an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and the city of Sedalia, Missouri for mutual aid for fire services.
Mayor and council, this is for, uh, the city, an agreement between our city and the city of Sedalia for, uh, fire mutual aid. Uh, that way we don't have to go through state fire mutual aid with the coordinator, it's a direct aid from one to the other. Both of us have similar, uh, services as far as equipment and people, it just enhances both of us, we can call upon the other for the other's help, and we don't have to go through the statewide mutually.
We got the same agreement sound with the Air Force Base too, right?
Working on that one right now.
Okay, but we, well, we had, we redoing it again?
We have, it just can.
Yeah, redoing it every year.
We're working on it, yeah.
So, as it stands right now, how, how would the process work to get help from Sedalia, for instance?
If we go through Sedalia, if we did it traditionally, uh, we would have to call the statewide coordinator, which is Dan Manley, who's badly at a lease summit. We would have to call them, ask if they're available, all this goes, we can call, I can call, your department, your department can see that they have an asset available, and they're not gonna need it, and they'll, uh, ship it to us. They'll ship it to us, the first time they did it, their asset came in on a train, that's where the dockery, I think, was burning.
How long ago was that?
It was in the eighteenth. The engine was pulled by horses.
If we need Sedalia to come to Warrensburg, we probably got a big problem, so. The state already knows about the problem, so.
My recommendation is to leave.
I'm moving to the second reading by title, this is just the first reading on there.
Oh, was it?
Oh, no, this one's the first and second. Yeah, the Pace is only first, but the others.
I see first also, Casey.
Yeah, it's under the first reading.
It is under first, it says second there.
It wasn't intended.
Should it have been under?
It should be under first and second.
Can we amend the agenda at this point, Adam?
That's fine.
Okay, somebody wanna move to amend?
I'll move to amend the agenda to move this reading to the first and second reading ordinance section.
Close?
That's fine.
All right, we get it.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Okay, now somebody just move.
I can pass it to second.
I'll move to the second reading by title.
Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between the city of Warrensburg and the city of Sedalia, Missouri for mutual aid for fire services. This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, also up for first and second reading, an ordinance amending ordinance five-four-seven-four concerning the adopted fiscal year nineteen annual budget, Matthew.
This, uh, budget amendment basically is to, um, decrease the expenditures in nineteen to allow for some additional expenditures in twenty budget. Uh, we did increase in a couple spaces, a couple places, we increased fifteen thousand for the community survey, moved it into this budget. Uh, thirteen thousand for property insurance, which came in higher than expected this year. Fifteen thousand for HVAC unit over the fire station, that was in, uh, twenty budget, and so we moved it to the nineteen. And then forty-eight thousand increase in donation revenue for the K-nine and A D units, which is a really amazing job by, by the PD. And twenty thousand increase of expenditures to pay for some of the dollar expenses this year. And then we had a sixty-five hundred dollar increase to, uh, replace the animal shelter HVAC unit, which was in twenty as well, but we moved it to nineteen. All of these increases, uh, combined, though, we still were able to de- decrease expenses to the general fund by hun- one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, so. It was a, uh, great effort by the, uh, department heads to, to put this together, and, uh, with, uh, I recommend approval of the ordinance.
Could. What, what, uh, do you know what caused the insurance rates to go up?
Uh, more, uh, cars than usual, uh, we, we bought several cars over the last few years, parts and different equipment like that, but we hadn't gotten rid of anything, uh, this year we have gotten rid of some of the stuff.
We've upgraded our fire trucks.
Yeah, fire trucks, a lot of, a lot of different things caused that increase.
Okay, so it, it's, uh, that we're insuring more ca- uh, more stuff, not that we haven't, like, any, you know, a, a, a serious string of accidents or something?
No, no, it was nothing.
Okay.
Any questions for Matthew?
Who said we'll be past the second reading by title? Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
This is an ordinance amending ordinance fifty-four seventy-four concerning the adopted fiscal year nineteen annual budget for the general fund. This is for adoption or rejection, Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
All right, appearances to the council not listed on the agenda, did anybody sign up? Brian, come on up.
I'm, uh, Brian Watson on the Zaxby's, uh, I emailed Mr. Stewart last night, and I asked, what is the actual completion date of the roundabout? And of course, I got, uh, Mr. Graves, he sent me emails, said the original date was August the first, now there's been a three to four week delay because of weather. So my question is, what's the estimated completion date, August twenty-second or August twenty-ninth?
Good question. Best guess?
Maybe you say three to four weeks, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a really good idea, we had rain this weekend, which messed us up, we've been laying asphalt today, created a couple of soft spots, and they had to get them squared up, so they can lay asphalt tomorrow on the, the west side there. I mean, they've progressed on pretty well with what they've been able to, uh, once we had some dry weather, uh, we've gone pretty well on the project. We're hoping, you know, we don't get any more inclement weather, and we keep moving forward, but this weather has just really been a problem for us, this year, the project.
Best guess at the moment, I guess.
I mean, when they first started, there was a lot of weather, we haven't had hardly any rain for about two weeks. I mean, I, I don't know, maybe I'm cruel, but they could've worked July the fifth, that was a Friday, and it was the day after July the fourth, but, and I mean, I don't, you know, maybe I'm, I'm a hard pusher, but not starting on the work every day until maybe eight-thirty, eight-forty-five, knocking off around four o'clock. I, I know you can't tell that company how to get their employees to work, but dear Lord, financially, I am hurting, so, I just need some help. I, I have, right now, I believe this thing's going till the middle of September.
Let's hope that's not the case.
Just curious, I mean, I'm not saying if I was you, have you talked to the company that's doing all of it and everything?
Uh, I don't wanna get involved, that, that's the city's responsibility, that's the project also's responsibility. I'm a private business person, I don't wanna create a conflict. I just, you know. I need some help. I need some help.
Well, the contractors want to get as quick as possible to, I mean, that's, it's not like they're, they, they know they're under the button, they know that they're gonna, they will be paying, uh, additional cost back to the city, uh, if they don't get the project completed, they've got enough of rain days to take it. It's been in, been in the, uh, this, this year, so liquidated damages can be assessed, and they know that.
Oh, okay, 'cause when I met with Mr. Stewart back around the first of June, I was under the understanding there wasn't nothing in the contract on that.
I believe there is.
I mean, that's great, do we have a, do we have a date, I mean, are we keeping up with the rain days?
We have, we have a full list over there.
Okay, all right, so great.
And in fact, you know, you mentioned the fifth, well, I believe that was the time we had the, uh, the extensive six inches of rain along with three to five in July.
Yeah, 'cause July fourth, the fireworks were rained out, July fifth, the fireworks got rained out.
Okay, but on July the third, I don't ride down there and look every day, but on July the third, I happened to be coming back from running errands, and it was about ten after three, and they were gone for the day, and I understand it's the day before the holiday, but I don't call, well, anyway, I run a business, I'm different. I'm a totally different person, but I need some help, I need some help, I need some help, I need some help, city council. Or maybe a visit from the city council might help out.
I'll, I'll reach out and make contact with the, uh, with the business and, and, uh, check the status report, and see if I can convey, uh, that we want it done as soon as possible.
I, I appreciate that.
It sounds like there's some incentives, uh, for them to get it done as soon as possible, or to, to meet their deadlines, so it kinda hurts them a little bit too, so, I'm sure they're working on it, but I'll reach out personally, uh, and talk to the business, and see if we can't, uh, uh, pass along our, uh, or hope that it's done on time, or as close to, as close as possible.
All right, thank you.
In the meantime, we'll see if we can go out and visit you.
Uh, I, I wish, but I constantly get feedback from people, I mean, it, it, it's very, very infuriating when somebody makes a comment about it. And I'm not even in the restaurant, I'm somewhere, I'm at church, I'm somewhere, and it just, it just blows, I mean, really. I got too much in my day, I mean, I have to fight to keep it inside, and that's why I won't go visit that contractor.
Hang, hang in there.
I know, but when I was building that Zaxby's, there was a superintendent didn't know how to do his job, he was gone. It can happen.
Anybody else need to speak? Come on up, sir, make sure you tell us your name.
Okay, uh, Dan Brooks. First thing I'd like to say is I'd like to give kudos to the police department, I had a, uh, need to call them, yeah, last week. The two officers that responded did an outstanding job, very, very pleased with how well you guys did. Second issue I have, and I don't know if this is a city manager issue, or a council issue, or just a issue at large, but that is the, what are the responsibilities of animal control? We have in my neighborhood where we're at, apparently, a family of raccoons that are terrorizing the local dumpsters. When you take the trash out at night, you throw something into the can, and all of a sudden you get a snarling, hissing, uh, sound coming at you, it will scare the bejesus out of you, I will vouch for that. Now, I do have ways of taking care of the issue, but I'm sure that not a one of them would probably be, meet the standards of the police department or the local animal rights people. So my issue is, does your animal control only do dogs and cats where they can collect fines? And, or do they take care of animals, whether it be domesticated or wild, that are a nuisance to the neighborhood?
Animal. I don't, I think it's dogs and cats, um, to my knowledge.
Yeah, I was, I was actually with, I was actually talking to Tim when he got a phone call for a, um, for a raccoon in a trash can.
So when I've called the conservation a couple of times, they get a trap, I guess they've loaned me at Home Run, the management, a couple of times traps, and then we trap them, and then they come and get them and take them somewhere, but you're still gonna get them, I mean, you can get rid of this family, but.
Are they saying the homeowner or the property owner get the trap, or are they gonna provide one?
Yeah, one time they provided us one, but then another, they've had us trap it itself, and then call them back, and they'll come and get the trap.
We've, we've had a couple, at, at the office, we've had a couple get in the trash can, and I just basically shove a piece of wood down there or something, so they can walk away, so they can crawl out on their own. Um, I mean, but it's wildlife, it's not, I mean, it's really, we don't have an ordinance in place for our animal control to handle wildlife.
But I would recommend conservation, 'cause I have had that problem.
And how would I get hold of them?
Give me a call tomorrow, I'll, I'll take care of it for you.
Okay.
We've probably Googled conservation or something like that, I'm sure.
Which is the extension.
'Cause I do know that some of the residents are arming themselves with pellet guns just to scare them off.
Yep.
And that, to me, is a bigger problem than the raccoons.
That, that unfortunately, we do have an ordinance for.
If I understand, but I would rather have something done so that people aren't doing that, just when you, you know, take a pellet gun with you to go to take the trash out.
So a lot of ours need the lid closed, they can't get in, but a lot of people like to leave the lids open so they can get in.
I've had it both ways, and the little boogers get it, all the lid does is when they do get in, they can't get back out, so that just, but, thank you.
All right, next up is mayoral appointments, we have two that were emailed to you, did everybody get those emails?
So one of them was in Holden, right, that's okay that they don't have to live in.
One of them was Holden?
I thought that.
Holden, uh.
I thought you said live in Holden.
Yeah, Holden, Missouri.
Well, that's a diversity and inclusion.
Yeah, diversity and inclusion, you can't, some you can, some you can't. Uh, that one you don't.
But good catch.
So I wanna recommend Scott Thomason to WCVB, and Leah Weller to Diversity Inclusion Commission.
And move to Bruce. Brooks.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Holmberg.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes, thank you. Uh, miscellaneous matters from the mayor and/or city council, anybody got anything, can we go to the columns?
So I just, on the roundabout, I'm just kinda curious, because I, I drove north going out of town, and, and I'm sure it's not done, but, I mean, that's a, a pretty nice roller coaster there, so, yeah. I mean, so are they planning on going back in and re- and asphalting again?
That'll be, that's not the way it's gonna be based on.
Okay.
That's just, all you're driving on it right now is basements.
Okay.
There's another layer base, another layer of service.
So they'll, so they'll close that.
It'll be flush.
So they'll close that site again, and.
Push back and forth.
Okay. No, I just happened, I was driving, holy cow.
That's why he says bump.
Yeah. Well, I read the bump, and I went, kung-kong, I was like, hey, it's not a bump, that's a cliff.
And we do have, have signs on it and everything, but, you know, you still have to realize that for me, it's a construction site.
Right, I, I understand that, I just wanted to be sure that there was.
Going north to on Saturday.
Yeah, I was just a little concerned, I mean, I knew it was still under construction, but I just wanted to be sure that there was another, something else being done, so.
Anything else from city council? All right, kinda wrap it up and move around the room, Matthew, anything from you?
Um, you have the quarterly reports in your, uh, packet, we're, we're about on pace with, uh, where we should be. We're down in expenses, but, uh, expenses usually catch up in the fourth quarter, so, uh, we're a little, a little bit higher than normal in revenue, but that's because of, uh, lease proceeds of the street school. Other than that, we had a twenty percent increase in sales tax, uh, over this, this year, this time last year. So that was a, a good thing, but we're still basically on par for what we've budgeted.
Was that because of the, the, the state took their time to remit it, or was that actually a twenty percent increase?
It's not, it's not.
Certainly.
Yeah.
What?
I have nothing additional.
No?
Well, while we're having a little discussion about the roundabout, I wanna, I wanna state that our staff is working very diligently to make sure we get the quality of the project, not something that's slapped in in a hurry, uh, we've got issues with base set there, not being s- substandard, and, uh, it's taking a little longer to get that back in, in condition, it's something that we either do it right now, or we take it later on. So to try to expedite a project, to get it done, uh, and to have had a passion, and it's not what my staff or myself, I have worked trying to do.
I don't, and, and don't think that that question was 'cause I want you to expedite or anything like that, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'd like to see more people out there working too, I mean, but that's not our, you know, that's not our business, that's the contractor's business. Absolutely, yep, I mean, so, you know, 'cause when I do go, when I do swing by there and see, you know, two people, it's kinda like, that's all that's out here, so.
There's, uh, there's many times more going on behind this.
Well, and I'm sure there is, yeah, I don't know anything about putting a street in, you know, but you do, so.
Uh, the other, so I wanna remind the city council that our asphalt overlay, uh, is supposed to begin. Uh, the other, so I want to remind the city council that our asphalt overlay is supposed to begin milling on Wednesday. Uh, actually asphalt man laid out Holden Street and Clark in that area. Uh, we wanted to do a thing to get out of the way of the college, try to get started up. Once that asphalt's down, we'll, we'll have a strike to contact with the end of Clark Crosswalk Network. Be cautious and stay on that area beginning.
What happened, I saw you guys were getting that fixed, which was great over there on Hawthorne. What, what happened to that road?
Probably, yeah, there's, uh, construction techniques, so to speak, that have been, there should have been some, uh, subdrains within, I guess, that bank.
Oh, okay.
Uh, at some point we're gonna have to go in there, take our, run that bank on the south side and put some fresh drain in there. Water seeps out of the hill and gets there, meets the road bed and, uh, causing it to soften up. And so there's gonna be some, some steps to work down there. Our problem is we've got too many places to build at the same time. Just, uh, we've got a lot of patching we're trying to get done and a lot of people are sending in requests and, you know, you're gonna do what you can get at.
Gary? Mercy?
Um, the visitor center, um, open house ribbon cutting is next Wednesday, um, the thirty-first, from four to six. So the ribbon cutting will be at four and then we'll have an open house until six. Uh, I know several of you have been by to see it and really excited to show it, so thank you so much for coming by. Um, we hope all of you can make it on the thirty-first.
Daniel?
Uh, just one quick thing. We have started the flat roofing event. Um, they uploaded all their materials today and will begin the construction tomorrow. Um, there's only, it's probably just a little over three weeks. Um, that was a lot quicker than we thought they would be here even. So the next week, you'll notice, um, some of the entrances will be, um, will be cowed off. You won't be able to go in as they work on that section of the roof. Um, we'll try and direct people in the building a different way. They're gonna start tomorrow on the senior center roof.
Okay. Jill, anything from Main Street?
No, just to thank Peter Rich for coming down to our last downtown business owners meeting. We had a credit turnout and I appreciate him talking the business owners through how to handle this and issues that arise without, you know.
Greg? Suzanne, anything from the chamber? Greg?
No.
Right?
Um, just, uh, build on what Jill said. We're, um, increasing our foot patrol presence downtown and vehicle presence. Um, we are hearing from business owners who are noticing that, so, um, as you guys are down there, yeah, nice. So, um, one particular person that's causing a lot of the issues, um, we're working through our legal processes to see if we can get him into some services or if he just wants to get into services, we'll provide some service for him.
As noted by the three hundred and twenty-five person doc, tomorrow they'll be prosecuting.
Put him on a train today.
Anything else from the Go To The Cause from this group?
Crathago Dillon Dust.
All right, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Thirty-five minutes, another.
My parking lot, though, costs it all the time. So yesterday morning I got there at eight o'clock and at nine fifteen we opened up the doors. And so my waitress guy went up to the guy and said, can you move on? We got up and hit his face and it's dead. And that was today. It was like eighty pounds. So it's like, he's just sitting there.
Okay, I just, I, I don't know.